Can everybody chime in for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. So far we had Supervisor Esposito, Supervisor Ron. Olbergon has been apprehended in northern Lake County, Winthrop Harbor to be specific, earlier this afternoon. It was a great collaboration by law enforcement from northern Illinois as well as our sheriff's department here as well. I want to thank all you who came out tonight to hear and discuss our county insurance for Kenosha County. And what we're going to do first is I'm going to hand over to Florida Bob Riedel, he's going to make a few introductions. We're going to have short presentations and then we'll do the questions to follow. Bob Riedel, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for taking some time out of your evening to be here and to learn about how far we have come essentially from the time of Act 10 until now. The presentation that you're about to see will be presented by Rayanne Bodry. Rayanne is the Executive Vice President of the Horton Group, and the Horton Group has been consultant to the county on the issue of health benefits for a long time, well before I got here, so probably the mid-'90s, and really has helped guide us through the complicated issue which is health. So I'm really grateful you came, hopefully you brought a lot of good questions, and after we make this presentation, we'll be happy to answer every one for you. We also have a copy of the presentation that we'll hand out after the meeting. So with that, Ms. Rayanne Bodry.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I too wish to thank you very, very much. I know there's a lot going on tonight, so I will try to be as brief as I can but give you as much information as you need. Please stop me at any time you have a question because we want to make sure that this is about you and your learning and your experience with regard to the county's health insurance. As Bob mentioned, we've been working with Kenosha County for quite some time, myself and my team. I had a team of public sector specialists. I work with right now 58 municipalities in the state of Wisconsin, including 17 counties, and this is my forte and my niche. We've been working with them since prior to Act 10 and certainly since Act 10, we've had some new and interesting challenges. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to make sure that everyone has a little bit of the history of what's going on with the county health insurance and that you have an understanding of our strategic plan as we move forward into 2016 and beyond. The goal of health insurance obviously is a very personal one. It's to take care of our county employees and their families so that when they're here and present, they can do their job. Also with county health insurance, obviously, the other part is that we as county board members and as people that take care of county employees get to fulfill the promises that we've made in the past and hopefully be able to complement and enhance people's work-life into the future. So as we move forward, I wanted to start with the year 2012, and this is when the county started to see big changes in health insurance. Some of this was of course due to Act 10, but the majority of the change was really due to having to consistently manage to a budget that wasn't going to continue to grow exponentially over time. Obviously, you all have fiscal responsibilities and we have to balance total compensation packages with health insurance. So what did we do in 2012? We started with eliminating the county contribution to the flexible spending account. For those of you who have been around for a while, the county used to put monies into the Section 125 flexible spending account for people to use to offset costs on a tax advantage basis for deductibles, copayments, et cetera. And that was a savings of approximately $600,000. Secondly, we added a prescription drug deductible. Now, one of the things that you'll notice is there are two ways that one manages a budget for health insurance. The first, and the less desirable one, is to add premium contributions by employees. And the reason that's less desirable is if people are making contributions to health insurance, we all like to use things we pay for. We are good consumers. So if we weren't using the health insurance and we weren't contributing a great deal, we might not have felt exposed. In the case where we start to begin to pay for things, we recognize that there's a value and we start to look at what we're getting in return for our payment. So while it's sort of a common theme these days that employees contribute toward the cost of their employer-sponsored health insurance, it isn't the most desirable method to manage cost. It does manage a budget. The desirable way to manage health insurance costs though, or plan costs, is to do things and institute types of plan design changes that control or change behavior. So when we put in the $150 prescription drug deductible on the second and third tier prescription drugs, so the county's drug plan has always been three-tier. Low-cost drugs or lowest-cost generics were at the first tier, and we wanted to move people to those lower-cost drugs. One way to do that was to put that deductible into the second and third tier so they'd think about that potential of switching. That saved $400,000. We wanted to increase the inpatient copayment so if somebody went to the hospital for more than a 24-hour stay, they would be looking at a $300 per stay copayment, not a per day. We changed other medical copayments, and you can see them listed there for an additional savings. We created a health insurance plan design for the Sheriff's Deputies Association or those that did not contribute to WRS. And we have a diagnostic imaging copay and Wheaton System inclusion in the Humana Network for $100,000 savings. And we eliminated the wellness benefit of $250, and we repurposed that into the Vitality program which was cost-neutral. The savings was budgeted at $1,009,050. We got half of that in calendar 2012 because we still had people that into 2013 were covered under a collective bargaining agreement. It's interesting to note as we move forward into the Affordable Care Act or Obamacare as it's more commonly known, one of the things that many of the health plans have done is actually move to a copay plan as their lowest-cost marketplace program. So they've actually copied Kenosha County, and that's very, very unusual that a lot of health insurance companies would copy a municipal government program. So we're very proud of that. They've actually looked to that as a very low-cost plan. Also in 2012, one of the things that people don't always understand about county health insurance is we are partially self-funded. And what that means is that the county has a deductible on every man, woman, and child in the plan of $150,000. You never see that deductible as an employee or as a plan participant because we're subject to whatever our schedule of benefit shows, but the county is responsible for that. And the reason that we point out the large claims in each of these years tonight is because when something happens where you have a claimant that reaches $150,000, that eats away at a reserve. These are typically very unusual types of claims. These are cancers, these are preemie babies, transplants, things of that nature, or what we like to call ones-and-dones, the car accident. Somebody falls off a roof and breaks their back. Those usually, they have the surgery, they have their treatment dealt with, and then they move on, and they're usually fairly healthy as they move forward. So you're going to see some of that and how it affects our budget and our reserve over time. So in 2012, our large claimants represented 15.4% of the total claims cost. And as you'll remember the old 80-20 rule, 20% of the people on any given health plan will be 80% of the cost. That's almost always true. You'll have a lot of people that kind of go along and they're taking their high cholesterol medication and they're having their annual physicals and they're doing things of that nature, but that really isn't where the big costs come from. The big-ticket items are going to be these large claims, the surgeries, et cetera. So we had 15.4% of those represented by large claims in 2012. How that breaks out is when we have a stop-loss deductible of $150,000, Kenosha County received back $998,749 in stop-loss reimbursements, or 5.6% of those large claimants were actually reimbursed, so they were over $150,000. In 2013, we further reduced the insurance budget by $1,650,000, and the cost savings were, these were for those people that had the expired collective bargaining agreements. We also eliminated certain medical-covered procedures that most people were not taking advantage of. For example, things like some of the dental-oral surgeries that were kind of older, remnants of a history of a health plan long ago, some of the morbid-obesity types of coverage, those sorts of things. And we eliminated county-paid dental coverage at that point in time, or an $800,000 savings, meaning that we still made dental coverage available, but it is at a voluntary level. We introduced a voluntary vision program so that people that needed to wear glasses, contact lenses, et cetera, were able to get those services on a tax-advantage basis and at a very low cost. We also implemented a 5% premium contribution based on the Vitality program status achieved. The reason that the county chose to go in that direction was that for those people who were willing to participate in a wellness program and better their medical conditions over time, keep themselves well and healthy, or put themselves on a better path, they were given a slight reward in terms of what they had to contribute toward their premium. Those that chose not to participate obviously have less concern about what they're costing the healthcare plan under the county level, so they were asked to pay a little bit more. So those who use more were asked to pay more. Our large claims in 2013 represented 29.2% of the total claim costs. And as you can see here, we had $744,144 in stop-loss reimbursements. Now, the thing to remember as you look at claim cycles, and you're going to see this very clearly when I show you the history in 2014. Claim cycles go up and they go down. The last time the county was in a very difficult claim cycle was in 2009 and 2010. We basically had lost about $2.8 million in our reserves, a lot of claimants under the $150,000 cap and very few that were over them. So we don't necessarily care about the proverbial million-dollar person. That person a large amount, or $850,000 is coming back to the county in terms of reinsurance. What really starts to hurt is all the knee and hip replacements at roughly $80,000 to $110,000 because all of that is spent, none of it really comes back. And what you're also going to see is you're going to see the retirement cliff that comes through in most municipal budgets these days. Basically, people are retiring. Counties tend to skew, average age is about 48 here at Kenosha County. Cities go a little bit lower, they're usually in the low 40s, but you see a lot of people getting things done in time for retirement. They want to go off and enjoy retirement with their knees taken care of and some of their more elective surgeries and things being done. And you're going to see some of that in the data that we're going to show later. So we had a lot more dollars out the door in 2013, but less reimbursement. So in 2014, our insurance budget really hadn't hit badly yet, and we had no plan changes and we had no increase to the premium contributions. This really was a reflection of seeing everybody move into the same plan, having everybody reflective of a premium contribution and moving into Vitality. So in 2012, we never really captured all of the savings from 2012 until about a quarter of the way through 2013. Same with 2013. We get everybody in the same plan, we're all moving to the copay plan, we're contributing, things are clicking along nicely, so when we project for 2014, which is usually around July through September of the previous year, things were running swimmingly. So we did have minimal changes in 2015. We increased the employee contributions by $240,000. So large claims in 2014, 36.9% of the total claim costs. So this was a big and difficult year. The stop-loss reimbursement, Kenosha County received over $2 million in reimbursement, or 11.9%. We had some pretty major shock losses. We had nine people with significant costs over about a quarter of a million dollars, and in some cases significantly more than that. And that happens. Again, these types of claims honestly are what I believe we all think insurance is for. These are the things that we expect that people couldn't pay on their own if they were incurring them. And this is how that breaks down. In 2015, as I mentioned, we had minimal changes to the budget, and we're doing pretty well right now. Our large claimants year-to-date, this was done using claim data through the end of August of 2015. We had seven claims over the current specific deductible of $150,000, which is down from the 11 in 2014. It represents 12.9% of the total claim costs, and we've already received year-to-date $486,000. The trend is improving. We are losing some of these shock losses. The people have improved or they've gone on to other things, so we're going to see a reduction of 3.2% on large claimants in 2016 is our projection. The stop-loss deductible, again, we show the 486, or 3.2% of those large claimants have already been reimbursed. Humana Vitality, year-to-date, we have 78% of people who have done at least something, and 37% are fully engaged, and this was data through July. Right now, I think when we ran the last report, because September is always a really good cutoff date as the county starts to measure through that, we have over 70% of people engaged at Silver or better. The history of the internal claim fund, this is here because we want to show the story of the changes that have been made and what happens to the budget as we work through that. It's also important as the county board looks at the budget that when you're looking at a total number, you recognize in some cases where those dollars come from. It isn't all the county money putting toward that 18 to 20 million. And so what you're going to see here is you see what the county-paid retirees contribute to the cost, the self-paid retirees, there's a different level for each of them, your Medicare supplement people, this is a direct pass-through, so they pay the county, the county pays the Humana Advantage Plan on their behalf, and then what the active employees cost. The interesting thing about the actives is as you look through the year over your history, you'll note that we've actually decreased the cost for active employees since 2011, and yet we've increased their actual numbers. So the actual number of people working here at the county is actually going up, and the costs are staying relatively stable. That is obviously the strategic goal of the county and the health plan, is to maintain a nice quality health plan while keeping the budget in line, and we think we've been pretty successful at that. It's important in 2016 that we do recognize that for the last two years, so 2014 and 2015, we have had a large number of shock loss claims. That means that the $2 million that's regularly set aside for reserve costs, or that we think that we need to have in cash in case of these large claims, has been somewhat depleted by about $697,000, or a little bit, we expect by completion of this year, that it'll be closer to $800,000. So we are proposing changes to the county health insurance plan. We're changing the prescription drug copayments from 12/2244 to 12/3560, again, keeping that low-cost generic, or that low-cost Tier 1 drug copay exactly the same. And remember, a number of drugs continue to be available at no cost to employees if they're on the preventive side of the coin. We're increasing the emergency room copayment from $100 to $200. That is still relatively low in comparison with what other plans are doing out in the world. We've increased the inpatient hospital copayment from $300 to $350, again, per stay, not per day. And then we expect that reduction in the cost of large claimants and trend to be, no longer to be considered on, going by about $214,000 for our $800,000 fix. We've also looked at adding a benefit that's new and up and coming to the county's health insurance plan. This is called a virtual visit or a teledoc. This is the wave of the future with health insurance. This is a 24/7, 365-day-a-year availability through your smartphone, through your landline at home, through any kind of Skype or computer network that you'd like to use to visit with an actual physician for things that one might go to urgent care for. We're recommending to the county that we have a very small copayment on these visits, $5 or $10. And the way that this is going to look is you make a call, they tell you through, again, your phone or your computer, "A doctor will be calling you back in 20 minutes," is typically the return time. Is this the phone number that they should call? We've experimented with these, and I've actually had a few visits. Horton has Telus stat docs at Horton. So I had a sinus infection, I was traveling, which I do quite frequently, called, used my Benny card, went in, and Dr. Johnson from University of Michigan called me back in 20 minutes. We had a 15-minute phone conversation, she e-prescribed my antibiotic, I went to the local mall mart and filled it, and I was on my way. So these are things that you would standardly go to urgent care for. I've got one child with pink eye, I've got two others, guess what, they're all starting to show signs and symptoms. Instead of hauling them all off to an urgent care center, can we just get the antibiotic? So these will go and be charged right directly to the county's health plan, and we can take care of that. We expect to save significantly, but we have not booked any savings from that in 2016. We want to just see how it goes and how well we can educate and what the county employee and retiree level of acceptance will be for this. This just shows that we use a set of software to budget these program changes so that you can see that we actually run some data. We don't just make this stuff up. And we gave the county about 83% of the credit, knowing that any change we make on January 1, we're still paying claims from the 2015 plan design into January, usually February and March of the following year. So we wanted to give only partial credit so we actually could project actual savings on that program. And does anyone have any questions on any of these topics that I brought up to you?
Supervisor Nobley have the floor.
You said you're changing the drugs contributions on Tier 1, 2, and 3. Are you changing the formularies? And I understand that the formularies, I just went through this with my company. So are drugs that once were in Tier 2 going to now be in Tier 3, and drugs that might have been once in Tier 1 are now going to be Tier 2? Or is the formulary all the same as it was?
The formulary is substantially similar to the way it was. We're using best practices that's out in the market, but the county does have a little bit of a customized formulary at this point in time, so we haven't moved completely.
So potentially some things that might have been Tier 1 might now become Tier 2 in 2016?
That could be correct, yes.
That can actually be detrimental if it's certain things. You know, so I would like to know kind of what that is. I had an employee who had a son on juvenile diabetes, and his contribution changed dramatically without me really realizing it was going to happen. So I don't want to have that to happen to me twice.
Right. We actually have taken a very strategic look at the changes to the pharmaceutical formulary over time. And for those of you that are not necessarily as versed at this or don't run your own health insurance programs, a formulary is a drug list that sets up tiering. And typically the way it works is Tier 1 is low-cost generics or low-cost formula brands that will have higher cost equivalents. So the therapeutic equivalent, there must be one on Tier 1 in order for it to be in the lowest-cost tier. And so you're going to see Neprizil for acid reflux instead of things like the little purple pill which is Nexium. That might be on Tier 3 because there would be alternatives on Tier 1 and Tier 2. But when something changes, we get a listing and a story from our current pharmacy benefit manager, which is the Humana Pharmacy Benefit Solutions. They send us how many people are impacted by the change, what the therapeutic decision or efficacy standards are, and then we make the decision as the county team as to whether or not we're going to go ahead and follow that change. In some cases, it is not only it's more effective for people therapeutically even than it is just for cost. So we want to just make sure we're managing. And the other thing that we also take a really strong look at is Lipitor. Last year, for example, it's a really good one because everybody's heard of it for high cholesterol. When that first went generic, actually for the first six months, the current maker of Lipitor is the only one that can continue to make the generic, and the generic actually costs two and a half times more than the brand. So they're really trying to, during that time, they're trying to make up their research and development costs because then everybody can make it. So we watch that and manage it very closely. So we may keep name-brand Lipitor on our formulary longer than somebody else would. So the county's managing their own.
Is that it Supervisor Nobley? Move on to Supervisor Decker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no page numbers on here. The slide that's fourth from the last page, the current status of Kenosha County, continued? Yeah, that one. I noticed the county-paid retirees amounts are increasing now eventually, now, correct me if I'm wrong, eventually county-paid retirees will not be covered because we changed the Oped benefits, correct?
That is correct, at some point, but it takes a while to complete those benefits.
And that's what I was going to ask. Do you have a projection when that's going to be, like the numbers based on implementation of people dropping off as they retire and go on Medicare?
I would have to ask Mr. Gertson for that projection of the number and age of those individuals. I don't have that at my fingertips.
Okay, but eventually that will be zero, that number, correct? Or close to it? Eventually it will be zero because, you know, 30 years from now.
Right. It's going to be, yeah, it's going to be a while, but yes, it should start to go down as well.
Okay. And then, I had one more question, sorry. What was it? Oh, you were speaking of the tele-doctor. So what is our copay, and maybe Mr. Riedel knows this better, what is the doctor visit copay right now? So a current copay is $35, and you're saying like a tele might be $5 to $10?
We really want to keep it cost-effective.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
Because number one, we really want it to be a benefit that people are tempted to try out, and the whole purpose of a small copay is again to recognize value. This isn't calling and saying, you know, what's the temperature when I'm upset? But it's one of those things where these are actual physician visits, but they cost approximately $35 instead of the urgent care which is, you know, several hundred.
Okay, that's, so then that was my next question. So the county's cost would be approximately $35 versus the actual urgent care, so it's actually very cost-
It's very cost-effective. And the other thing is when you think about a standard office visit, when, again, like I said, I have one child with pink eye and I know the other two are going to have it shortly, if I had to take all three of them in, we're probably talking about around $150 per visit plus, you know, labs and a higher-cost prescription rather than a generic antibiotic and one teledoc visit for all three kids.
Okay. So this is a way, the $5 or $10 copay is to get people that they're invested in it, but also cheap enough that people will want to try it versus a $35 copay? That's the incentive?
Correct.
Okay.
As well as just the convenience of it. I don't have to leave my home.
Right, it's almost, I mean, it kind of reminds me of when I was, you know, young, you used to be able to call a doctor and say, hey, and they'd give you a prescription without even seeing you, kind of almost like that except they are seeing you over the-
Right. And the other thing is they have the ability to access your medical records because they are regular licensed and credentialed physicians into the health plan, so they can actually access the medical records. So they'll know if I'm allergic to amoxicillin and that will give me a different antibiotic. The other thing that this is terrific for, if people start thinking about it, this is great for your college students that don't live at home. They don't have to run to Student Services, or they don't necessarily have to run to urgent care because they don't have a doctor in La Crosse. So this is a 24/7, anybody on the health plan will be able to use it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Supervisor Johnson have the floor.
First, since you were just talking about it, I want to say that GE Healthcare, we've been using virtual MD for probably almost a year and a half now, and absolutely love it. We don't go visit anymore, no more office visits, and the copay's minimal, the overall charge is minimal to GE. So it is fabulous, it's very good. The question I wanted to ask you was about the formularies. You said that the county actually decides? Who exactly within the county makes those decisions about the formulary? Is it a team, or is it-
There is a team, and essentially what happens is we get the listing from Humana at Horton. With, and we have a lot of pharmacists that we bring to the table. We have a couple of people that are outside Humana and outside Horton that will tell us a different story, if you will. And then we'll bring a recommendation if it's going to affect, for example, if to change people off of an injectable medication, I'll use Imetrix for migraine headaches, for example, and let's say we had 35 people that were getting three injections a year. Well, to change that over to the pills which aren't as timeliness and effective would be a lot less worth the fact that they're managing this pretty well right now. We might make a recommendation that the injection isn't a bad move for the county because we don't want four times as many pills just so people can stockpile them so they know that they can take care of this as the headache onset happens. So we're managing to, how many people is this going to affect? How painful is this going to be? Do we need more time to educate before we actually make that switch? So we're bringing recommendations then to personnel, and I believe at some point in time, Mr. Riedel can probably answer this better. It may go up the ladder depending upon what kind of cost we're talking about.
Could you answer that? Could you speak specifically to who approves the formularies internally here in the county?
Sure. It's a team, the chair is supposed to be an advisor, county executive, the chief of staff.
So no health professionals on our end are involved at all on the county's end?
No.
No? That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Kohlmeier, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question on the, I think you said the strategy is to keep the employee contribution minimal. Twenty fifteen, we moved like the top-tier rates from four to eight, five to ten. And then this year, I think, you know, looks like you're moving the co-payments. What, how, I guess, what's the strategy for moving half, half of the premiums one year? This year, we're moving the, the co-payments. To me, in my mind, it always made sense, I brought this up last year, why all the rates weren't moved at the same time. So you got two, four, six, eight, ten versus the top half, and now we're moving the co-payments. Is it based on the, you know, is it based on the inpatient co-payment cost or the medical ER cost as far as like those contributions going higher versus, I guess, why wouldn't we raise the rate from one to two to two to four to cover some of these increased costs?
Well, the, the premium contribution increase is more to cover those people who have determined that over time, with a lot of strategy by the county, with a lot of time and input by county staff to educate them as to how to use Vitality, have still determined that they have decided not to engage. So if they want literally nothing to do with wellness, they're not invested in their own health and that of their family members, then they're going to be charged more. So we've, the, the top end is trying, we're trying to stay minimal for those people that have achieved silver, gold, or platinum. So that's part and parcel of that. In order to achieve the eight-hundred thousand and not take it all in contribution, again, we looked at where are we, where are we seeing the costs rise inadvertent to the utilization? And we've had a lot more inpatient plan costs this year. And so we thought, well, we're going to make a minimal plan increase to those, again, to try to have people ask a better question. Sometimes is it, you know, is it worth that extra day of rest? Is there another strategy for doing it inpatient versus outpatient? Some of the surgical, surgical questions that can be asked. So don't go in on a Friday when nothing's going to happen until Monday, those kinds of things. So we, we just hope with a little bit more additional cost that people will ask the right questions.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
No, that's it.
Supervisor Ritzloff, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I could spend some time, but you, you represent fifty-two counties.
No, I, I represent about, I think it's eighteen counties.
Okay. Of those eighteen counties, how many have a health plan like this?
None.
Okay. Out of, out of those fifteen counties of them, who, on their contribution levels, who has one that's better? Contributions, premium employee contribution health plan?
Actually, I would say several depending upon the factors that you're weighing. Well, again, I, I want to share with you what we look at as the contribution level here at Kenosha County. We have, the employees pay all of the dental. That is not true with almost any other county that I represent. It's almost always employer-paid or employer-sponsored. So typically, what the average county employer right now is charging roughly around ten to twelve percent, which is what, again, Act Ten charged, but they also are still probably maintaining a very low deductible and a hundred percent coinsurance. So it, it depends on what you look at as an employee contribution. We have employees that are making a contribution to the plan costs each and every time they use a service here.
Okay. Let me ask you this question. Why are you against, when in the consulting with our county, are you against a deductible for networks? And you've been consulting and telling them to go with this co-pay approach? Why is that?
Well, the co-pay approach, again, when you look at a deductible, even the new thing that's out in the market these days, which is the high deductible health plan that are health savings account compatible, at some point, you are stopped by what you can ask employees to pay. Under the Affordable Care Act, there are maximum out-of-pocket costs that are in-network each and every year, and those are calculated and deployed by the federal government. In our case, instead of having a deductible, again, each and every time an employee uses a service, there is a co-payment. So it doesn't stop at the end of paying a hundred dollars or two-hundred-and-fifty or even a thousand. I'm paying each and every time I use a service. So we're getting to the same out-of-pocket cost if people are high, high-end users as opposed to them being afraid of a high deductible.
If I walked into a, I wake up tomorrow when my, my neck is all sore and I, I, for a hundred and fifty dollars, I can go to the emergency room with this plan, have an inpatient MRI done for four thousand dollars, and what's my out-of-pocket? A hundred and fifty bucks?
And there's an imaging co-pay as well. Could be an x-ray co-pay, I believe that's a hundred.
Okay, so for, how much, a hundred?
Two-hundred and fifty.
I'm, I'm going to hit the county with a four-thousand-dollar MRI bill.
Correct.
There's no incentive to go to an outside agency, to have an outside imaging center that would be half that for us? If we had a deductible, would we not, would an employee not want to know that? Why, what's my incentive to save on this plan with the co-pay versus the deductible?
If I had a, if I had a five-hundred-dollar deductible and I went to the emergency room and I paid that five-hundred-dollar deductible, I'd still have the MRI right in that emergency room. I'm not sure it changes the behavior.
Okay. Have you ever looked at giving us, looking at, do you know our, our populations? How many active employees do we have on the health plan? Do you know off the top of your head?
I believe there's like nine-hundred-and-seventy.
Okay. If I take eighteen million divided by nine-seventy-two, what's my average? It's about fifteen thousand dollars an employee, I think. Is that right? I don't, is that what it runs? Can you tell me of all your county groups, how many run at fifteen thousand dollars per employee per head?
Many run much higher.
Who?
Door, City of Racine, Wood County runs a little bit higher than that.
Okay. All right. It's not so important that the names, but, and you're, and you're, comparing that to the private sector, that's, it's high, is it not? What's your private sector average? It's closer to twelve, isn't it? A thousand? It is?
It is.
Okay. So you're saying that this, this plan is, is very rich in benefits, the contributions are pretty good? I mean, as far as low contributions to the employees. If you were a taxpayer in this city, in this county, you personally, and you work for a company, I don't know what you, I assume you have a health plan, and you told them, here's my health plan, and you talked to one of our constituents and said, here's the county's health plan, what do you think those constituents would say if they compared their plan to this plan? What, what, what do you think they would say?
Well, I'm, I'm sure that they might, they might feel exactly as you're illustrating here. But I would also share with you that as I've looked at this health plan over time, one of the things that it is important to remember is what's happening in the private sector right now as you look at the benchmarks. So these are not just my benchmarks. If you look at Mercer's and Milliman's and Hewitt studies, what you're seeing in the private sector right now is as deductibles go up, premium contributions are going down in terms of a percentage. So philosophically, most health plans now are looking at what do they want employees to pay as a total cost of participating in their workforce? And they're looking at attraction and retention. The county has done the same thing over time. So while we've just instituted, and I, and I understand that people may feel it's low when you're starting to talk about premium contributions, when we started to just institute that, again, with having a co-pay, what we've seen in the average is that the county employees are paying about twenty percent of the costs and about, an average of about eight on premium contributions because not everybody's as great at wellness as we would like them to be. So we're looking at twenty-eight to thirty percent, which is higher overall than most of my other public municipal governments. So philosophically, it's where do you want them to pay? I'd rather have them pay, again, and, and we may have to agree to disagree, but I definitely want people to pay as they use so that they understand and create a value in their own mind of what their health plan is worth.
Okay. Could you, what, how, I'm curious, your opinion on opting, employees opting out? Like the state plan offers employees two thousand dollars a year to opt out of their health plan. What's your opinion on that?
Well, when, in the, in the old days, so prior to Act Ten, when employees didn't pay anything, I understand the cash-in lieu of benefit argument because I was saving on health insurance premiums. In this day and age, the ability to opt out, I'm saving what my premium contribution is and the out-of-pocket. So if I have a better plan at a lower cost, or quite frankly, a plan that meets my family's needs at a lower cost, I can have that kitchen-table conversation. I don't need to carry two health plans anymore in order to, or one shouldn't give me cash. Last but not least, the county is self-funded. Our actual costs for the people that leave here are minimal. So it's a, it's an administrative cost, which might be twenty-five dollars a month, plus the stop loss, which at a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is not very much money. So if we gave people two thousand dollars to opt out, we'd actually be paying them more than the fixed cost. The other challenge I'm concerned with is who opts out? Healthy people opt out. We need that revenue source to fund the high-dollar premiums. I know it's counterintuitive, but you actually need a healthy pool to fund those people who actually have insurance problems. So I don't believe in paying people to opt out.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to not talk? I mean, tell me how long you want to go?
You can ask your opinions if you want to answer.
No, I mean, I'm not, I just, if other people want to chime in, I don't want to occupy all the time.
We've got a few others here, but ask another question and we'll move around.
Okay, if you, all right, okay, that's, that's what I'm asking because I don't want to occupy everyone's time.
That's all right. We've got the electricity pit on your mic. It's fine.
Have, have you ever showed the county a more of a traditional plan, like a fifteen-hundred-dollar in, in-network deductible to family, to, you know, you know, a standard two-thousand, three-thousand out-of-pocket type of thing? Maybe a cope, an RX plan that had the old-fashioned five-ten type of co-pay only? Have you shown us? Can you actually show us something like what it would save?
Yes. We actually have gone through this. We just made these changes in 2012 to the co-pay type plan, so it's not been forever. And in fact, this year in July, August, and September, we ran a lot of different plan models for the, the county execs' perusal and different team people weighed in. And this was the, this was the plan we determined that we were going to stick with and the changes to the health insurance proposal that we were going to make.
Okay. That's all for now, then.
We'll go on to Supervisor Skolitsky at the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along the lines of contribution, I want to correlate that, I'll just correlate it to myself. Because I know the range right now with the Vitality program ranges, and just family only, from anywhere slightly over two-hundred dollars per year to roughly a little bit over, maybe about eleven, eleven-hundred dollars per year excluding co-pays, excluding deductibles. For myself and a family plan, the private sector, for a very large corporation, I pay over six thousand dollars. So you can tell, can you explain to the rest of the body here, what are the plans going forward to get those contributions more in line with what the rest of the private sector is experiencing? I don't mean everywhere, and if you're with a small organization, it's even worse, is with a major corporation that has revenues into billions. To get things more evened out from a standpoint of what the contributions are, and I understand what you're trying to do moving forward, but that is a six-fold difference for somebody that does not participate at all with regards to the Vitality program, and they also have those available in the private sector, as you're well aware of, versus somebody that does take their health seriously and, and make those, take those steps to, to help reduce their costs. Because six-fold is an extremely large difference. And the majority of my constituents are not municipal employees, the private sector employees.
I definitely appreciate that perspective. And I think one of the challenges that we have as the public sector looks to draw itself a little bit more closely to the private, and I think that's been a goal for a long time. Even prior to Act Ten, everybody's sort of been looking at, what are we doing that's so dramatically different because these employee benefit costs seem to be out of control in line with the compensation packages, for example. One of the challenges as we look at this strategically is we have a lot of different people working in a lot of very different jobs here at the county. So for example, we have employees at Brookside who are not making what employees at, you know, in administration might make. So, you know, there's, it's a, it's a hard balancing act to say what's a good health plan versus what's a good premium contribution. And it's something that we, we really do delicately balance year over year. Having said that, I think some of the plans are to take a look at, is Vitality really having a effect and a return on the investment? We're also taking a very strong look at what's going on with our large cases here because if we can have an impact on our chronic diseases and our chronic case management or our utilization of some of the office visits and some of the, we have a lot of providers in Kenosha County, and people are, are used to pretty quick and prompt service. So maybe this tele-doctor, virtual visits will have some impact. But we are looking at every cost that we can manage, and we are working toward the Affordable Care Act affordability provisions too. So it's a, it's a delicate balancing act. We've looked at it every year. The county exec is very well aware, I think, as is personnel and administration, of the board's desire to move more in that direction. But at this point in time, it's been a strategic slow move. We'd rather do the plan design changes and control the behaviors.
So at this time, there's no specific steps that are planned, just some reviews, the just actions that you've taken, that you've, you've discussed. And I might add to, to, to give people perspective is, because it's, it's happened to me. If your position is eliminated in the private sector, you have really, now it's two choices, right? One is Cobra, so you take that six thousand dollars, and you don't double it. It's about two and a half times, okay?
Right.
And you have no income. That's one thing. Or if you want to be, be pushed out to the exchanges and you have children that are in other states, that means multiple policies. And that cost is essentially along the same lines, substantially more expensive. So this difference is almost, I have a difficult time comprehending how great the difference is between what we're currently charging our county employees versus what the taxpayers that are funding those payments are paying in the private sector. And I'm talking about a large company that was self-insured, let alone a small one. So I think that we more aggressively need to start taking a look at bringing contributions in line. Because we could talk about deductibles.
Right.
And I could tell you what mine was, three thousand dollars a year excluding co-pays. So it's not like it was some, I've got a hundred-dollar deductible. It was substantial. That is a lot of cost. And we need to start taking action to move towards that, to get things evened out between government or county, in this case, and the private sectors who are paying the bills. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Ritzloff, I don't see any other lights, so we're coming back to you. Huh? I don't, I don't, I'm going to clear it, I'm going to clear the screen. And I'll go to Anita Johnson now. Just clear the screen, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Rand. You've done a great job for the Stand to Joint Services, so thank you for that. I want to go back, and I'm sorry if you've already discussed this, but say, for example, my insurance, I pay a fee to cover my husband even though he already has insurance. Have we considered anything like that to help offset costs?
We have. We've looked at both the spousal carve-out and the spousal surcharge. And they're, they're two very different things. Oh, I'm sorry. So we looked at both the spousal surcharge and a spousal carve-out, and they're two different things. So a spousal carve-out means that any spouse that has coverage elsewhere can't be on our health plan. They actually have to take the coverage where they work, if it's offered to them, regardless of cost, it's, it's imperative, that's, would be the rule. And a, and a surcharge is one where we say you can still be on our plan, but you pay more, a fee, typically a hundred to more per month to cover that spouse. The theory being that other adults that are working adults need to be on their own health plan, and their employer should take care of them, at least on a primary basis. And when we looked at this, there were, there were a number of things that the county considered. And again, we're trying to manage this pool of individuals. So when we look at it, we have to take note of who are our claimants? You know, so if, if we have, for example, retirees that are grandfathered under another, under another year or another collective bargaining agreement, and they have retiree benefits, we can't really impact them. There are certain other people that we can't really impact. A surcharge is premium, so the sheriff's department is off limits. That would have to be a negotiated opportunity. The other thing is, is typically the high-cost claimants are not people that are out working. So our challenge is, again, who do we get rid of or who do we eliminate in order to have more money that does nothing, again, to change behavior or cost under the health plan? It does change the budget.
And I'm, again, I don't disagree with any of the supervisors who've talked to a premium contribution. I get it in, I, I don't necessarily disagree, but I will share with you again that the reality of a premium contribution or a surcharge is it changes the budget, it does not change behavior. So we have to, we have to carefully manage to that, because this is a large ticket item. And we just want to make sure that all of the people that need insurance here, when it's not their turn, and they're clicking along, and they're doing things right, that they have a benefit that they can turn to if and when they should need it. It has been cost itemized.
Sure. Oh, it has been?
Yes.
So, and we have looked at our population?
We have.
And how it would affect us?
Mm-hmm. And we've done studies as to, what if 10% of the spouses move off, or 10% were paying in? Um, and we know typically who they are.
So, and, and the change would impact us how?
Again, there would be money coming in that would offset the budget, because the, um, the team.
Do you remember how much at all?
Um, it was less than, um, well, I shouldn't say less than, I mean, it was around $600,000, I think, was if everybody left that potentially had a job.
Okay.
Because we have a large number of family plans here at the county.
Okay. And since we're, I have one more question, I'm sorry, because I want to understand the impact fully. Since we're self-funded, that wouldn't affect our coverage, like, for example, with joint services where we have to farm it out, and they're looking at our population?
Right.
So that wouldn't impact us here in this case, correct?
Right, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Just turn it off. Supervisor Ritzloff.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, um, not to belabor, it's sort of what Anita Johnson says, I think, we're self-funded, and you're talking about getting people off the health plan that could be on spouse's plan. And you said, it's only, you did some, you came up with $600,000 or whatever, if everyone left, that could. Um, I guess my question is this, you know the volatility of health insurance, okay? I could be a healthy day guy today. Tomorrow, I could step off that curb, break my leg, and be institutionalized for two days, and that bill's $6,000, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
If I was not on that health plan, if I was on my spouse's plan, who gets hit with the $6,000?
Your spouse's plan.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm of the convinced, uh, of the opinion that the least people we insure or cover, the potential cost is minimized, because we don't, everyone is a walking claim, in theory. They just are. And the volatility of their claim is so high, you can't, you can't do anything for under $1,000. Uh, maybe a prescription drug, name something that, even if a, a checkup, a healthcare, that's, that's at least $600. You can't, I mean, it's so few things that you can do that's going to be not real expensive. Even on a preventive side, those are still expensive. So I, I'm, I guess I'm, I'd really like to see more of that from you, if I could, about doing a, a buyout, like the state's offering, and really seeing how many employees here could opt out of our health plan. Because I honestly believe that's, that's, that's a, uh, an important thing for us to consider, especially a county that, we're, we, we're not a big corporation, and we have budgets that we have to stick with. We have a mental illness problem in this county that everyone's aware of. We have 18.5 million dollar health claims here. That's huge. And 10% of that's, um, $2 million? You, you, you see the, the volatility of a health plan is tremendous, especially when you're paying the claims. And, and granted, we have reinsurance for anything that's really large, so we don't care about them so much. Still have to pay 150 on those people. So, you know, we have to do one of four things, three things. We either have to get rid of as many people as we can, we have to have them pay more for this, or change a health plan if we're going to save any money off the, the 18 is never going to go lower. How are we going to get 18 down to 16 next year? Down to 15, or keep it at 18 with this health plan, with what we have now? How, how is that going to, how are we going to do it? Without us charging more, having less people, or changing the health plan?
Well, I, I think Supervisor Ritzloff, to be, um, to be very candid with you, in your example, and I just want to make sure I explain this, because I want everyone to sort of understand what's been looked at here. This isn't necessarily just my point of view. So, it's definitely something I believe in, and it's some, definitely something I've talked to, and we've studied, and the data proves it out. But if you were, we, we are talking about, if you weren't on the health plan, that would mean you went on your spouse's plan. That's not what a spousal surcharge or a spousal carve-out does. It eliminates spouses from the plan, doesn't eliminate you. So if you walked off the curb and you were still our employee, we'd still pay the $6,000. So, it doesn't get rid of the kids, because you can't make kids move, it doesn't get rid of the employees that are on the health plan, it just gets rid of spouses. And fortunately or unfortunately, it typically gets rid of the healthy ones. So we do want to balance that pool, it's important that we do that. We do charge people more. This has gone up dramatically over time, as demonstrated by a lot of the slides in the presentation. We've managed to get the cost down from roughly 20 million to a little less than 18 million over time, because we have changed payments, um, co-payments, and added them everywhere to the plan, and we've added deductibles on things like prescription drugs and inpatient services. So, we haven't not changed the plan, we haven't not charged people more, we're just doing it maybe more slowly and more strategic than we might all want to see. Maybe we want to see it be more aggressive, and I understand that, and we should look at that. But it's not that we haven't done any of those things, and I do believe that it's a mistake. And again, this is my strong belief system, to pay people to not take your health plan. Benefits and compensation in my world are a little bit separate. Because if I take that $2,000, and tomorrow my spouse loses his job, I would be back on your health plan within 30 days. So, I'm now counting on income that I no longer have, and I have to manage differently anyway. So, I, I believe that I'm not paying my 10% if I don't take your health plan, and I'm not paying your co-pays, deductibles, et cetera. So, it's a balancing act around my kitchen table and my budget as well. So, I think we're doing our thing, um, I, I guess I just disagree with your point.
Another question, Mr. Chairman. Okay, buying that logic from you, why don't we charge, what normal companies do, a much larger contribution for dependents? We're, you pay so little around here for your family coverage, it's, it's incredible. I mean, you know that. Most companies charge 50%, up to 50%. Why, if we want to, if it's so important that we have our dependents on this, for various reasons that you're saying, why not give them sort of a thought on this? Gee, I stay in the county's plan, but I got to pay this. I can go to my spouse's plan, or my spouse's plan, and I guarantee you, there's no, there's no questions, they're going to go to this county plan. And, and that was what, the school district was like that, kind of unified, that's, they had, that's one of the problems, is even with a good health plan, this was better. So I'm saying, we must have a tremendous amount of dependence on this health plan, we have to. Because this, you, I, you said this is one of the best plans there is, who, why wouldn't you for these costs? We're paying for a lot of dependence on this. And, and I'm saying, okay, employees, let's, that's a good thing, I guess, well, let's boost that up. Why can't we make that contribution higher for, like, most companies? Maybe 25% at least on that?
What are you, what are we going to then suggest that we do for those employees whose dependents don't have a health plan? What if I don't have a spouse and I'm a single parent? Or my spouse doesn't work? Or my spouse is, um, has the same, has the same situation? I mean, we, you know, it's, it's kind of, unfortunately, in health insurance, this is an all-or-nothing gig, and it is something that we've sort of had to, had to deal with. It's, are all spouses going to pay a surcharge? Not just working, not just whatever, they're going to pay extra to be on the plan. If we're going to charge dependents a larger amount of money, then what happens when we have single parents in different, in different places? Where do they go? It's, we have a single rate and a family rate. And, I, I mean, it, it is, it is what it is. So if we charge 25% and we don't have, and we lose some proportion of the workforce because they can't afford to be here, because now they can't buy health insurance for their family, I'm not sure what happens, or people go without.
That's, that's philosophical issue, but also, then, why didn't, why are we only on a two-tier? Why don't we have four tiers?
When, um, you do health insurance underwriting, it's basically, here's how, here's how this works. So if I am the underwriter, and I'm looking at you from Humana's perspective, or the budget's perspective, or whatever, and I can show absolutely the formula that, that's used. If I need $18 million at the end of the day to run this county's health plan, because that's what it costs, I'll divide it up as many ways as you want me to. But at the end of the day, I, as an underwriter, am going to find $18 million, because that's what it costs to run this health plan. So if I give an employee plus spouse rate, or an employee plus children, and then full family, the full family rate goes up. And I'll tell you, as I look at the claims analysis for the county, I'll take two 35-year-olds with three little kids any day over two 54-year-olds on this plan, as a spouse only, because that's where your claims are coming from. Your average age is higher, and think about it, even if I'm healthy, perfectly healthy in my 50s, two colonoscopies are $6,000 bucks. And two little, three little kids, eyes, ears, and nose exams, and their, their shots are nothing close to that. So, again, it's just a underwriting philosophical, um, discussion, but I can show you how the budgets are calculated.
We're going to go around the horn now.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chairwoman Bruning, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brienne, I want to thank you for being here tonight and presenting to the county board, and thank everyone from the county board of taking your time out on a Tuesday night that we typically don't have a meeting to be here for this. But it appears as if the increased employee contributions have allowed the county to propose a flat budget for the employee health benefit over the past five years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I see in the budget that it's increasing by 3% in 2016. If the budget variance is covered by $800,000 in increased employee contributions, what is the cause of the 3% increase? Can you answer that?
Um, you will notice, oh, I'm sorry, you'll notice in your budget books, when you see the health benefit, that it is up by 3%. That 3% is, um, caused by an increase in FTEs that are anticipated for the upcoming year, and then an actuarial, uh, analysis of family versus single going into next year. And so that covers the 3%. The $800,000 we already talked about, that was covered with the increases in the prescription co-pays, and the co-payments for inpatient hospitalization and emergency. So that's where that happens.
Okay, so it's based on FTEs, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Supervisor Decker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Ms. Bowdre, um, to kind of jump off Supervisor Johnson and Supervisor Ritzloff's questions about spouses, um, and this is about dependents or spouses, well, not spouses. Do we audit, or is there audits done, or reviews, or requirements, um, of our employees to prove that there's, the children, the dependents are actually legally required to be, you know, have insurance or things like that? Like, for example, that they're, um, through a divorce, that they're required to offer the insurance, or cover the insurance, things like that? Or are we auditing how old the dependents are? Have they aged out, or things like that? How, are we doing that?
We are doing that.
And how often?
There was a full dependent audit done in, um, 2014 for the calendar year. We've recommended that that happen every, um, every two to three years here at the county. Also, Ms. Esposito and her team are auditing every new hire that comes in, and, and then every annual, every year in November during the open enrollment, people have to fill out new, uh, new forms, and they're matched against the Humana census, the, um, the information that we had in, in 2014, if they're continuous employees. But, um, they're audited literally every year.
Okay.
Everybody has to re, is required to fill out and complete new forms every open enrollment.
And, and show that they're, you know, required by court orders?
Dependents are the right age, they still have the right name. If they have a different last name, we're asking for marriage certificates, so all of that is being done at the, in the Personnel Department.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Move on to Supervisor Skolitsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You had made the comment that charges have increased dramatically. As I look through here, I'm trying to find where those are. Can you be specific of what charges have gone up, or, I don't mean cost, I mean, charges to employees have gone up dramatically? And what do you mean by dramatically?
Well, the, um, originally, again, in 2012, the county had no office visit co-pay, so that's gone up from nothing to $35 over time, and we've been trying to increase it. Approximately, it's gone up about 10% to a little bit more every year. So whatever that co-pay has been, we've been, we've been increasing it over time. Um, we added the $150 prescription drug deductible, and that is, in a family, that's up to three family members that would have to pay that. That was a new and increased cost. We're changing again Tier 2 and Tier 3, trying to keep people in the generic, um, so that their cost effectiveness on those higher-cost prescription drug claims. We didn't have an outpatient or, or inpatient co-payment before. So, from 2012, I think all of the co-pays have changed, in my view, pretty dramatically on a percentage basis over time. I agree, and I understand what your, um, what your, your day-to-day work life is, and I understand that this may not be as dramatic as, as we would like to see, or as, as aggressive. But it has changed for county employees quite, quite a lot.
I understand, when you're starting at the baseline of zero.
Right.
Any change seems to be dramatic, but in the real world, it's not that substantial. I just wanted to get clarity, because I, I did see those numbers, and everything, it's not dramatic, maybe I missed something. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Noble, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, um, I think we should consider that spousal contribution, or if the spouse have their own insurance, they should, uh, not be able to have county insurance. Where I work, we've, I think we did that 15 years ago, or at least as long as you can, could have done it, and I think it's been about 15 years. I've seen no pushback because of that. Uh, most people understand it. All the employees that we've hired and told them that we have, that's our policy, everybody understands it. And, uh, if you said it would save us $600,000, we should go with it.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, first of all, I, I again work for GE, and while I am in a higher bracket, I have the same insurance that everybody has there. So everybody, no matter what level they are, has the same insurance. And my contributions are over $500 a month for my family, um, for my husband and my, my one child still eligible. Um, you know, and then I do pay a fee for my husband as well. He's not excluded, and I, I don't think we should automatically do that, I think we should give people the opportunity to at least pay a fee. Um, but I think that we should look at that. Um, and one of the reasons, I, I just want to clarify this to you, because I, I think you probably realize from joint services, I'm very pro-worker, I try to do what's best for them. But I'm also, um, responsible to the county as a whole. And, not too long ago, we just implemented an increase so that we could bring our employees in line with the private sector, more closely aligned with the private sector. That brings me to a point where I really feel that our insurances also need to come more in line with the private sector. Um, you know, we made this choice to give them across the board raises to align them, so we owe it to the county, to our taxpayers, to bring that insurance in line too, and to implement the savings. Um, because like, I think other people have said, I would just like to see some of the things that you've already done. You said you already did the formula, or you already did the data crunches for everything. I just would like to see them, I'd like to see some more options. Like we do in joint services, how we go through all the different things that you've done, because I'm sure you've done quite a few. Um, so is that possible? Is it possible for us to get copies of that? Mr. Chair?
I don't, I can't answer that.
You can't answer if you can get us the copies of things she's already analyzed?
I, I, before the budget starts, I'm sorry. I would have to look into how quickly we can get that for you.
Okay, it sounds like they're already done, so it would be just a matter of emailing them out.
Yeah, and we had not, you know, discussed that particular thing between the two of us.
Okay, because that is something that I think would be absolutely, I, I think that it's very significant in the decision that we're about to make before the budget.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Supervisor Holm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question and, and then a comment. Could you perhaps give us a bit of an example as to maybe what the average differential would be in terms of the health insurance cost to the county, uh, for a younger employee versus an older one?
In terms of, um, actual claim costs, what they, what they probably are incurring, or are you thinking about, because there is no premium differential, so it's utilization? Um, I would tell you probably the, the average 20- to 30-year-old uses 1/8 of the cost of somebody that's 40 to 50, and then you're, you're talking, it, costs get dramatically higher as we, as we age.
Mr. Chairman, it, from what I've heard tonight. It seems like it would be smart public policy, and good for the health of this government, were to strategically look at how it recruits, trains, and retains younger employees. I know we're doing some of that, but it could be a really great initiative, particularly for a chairman to finish out his term. I think that would be fantastic. Instead of some of the things that I've heard batted around here, which I know it's early in the holiday season, we're starting to sound a bit like Scrooge, this could be a really fantastic way out. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When people look for jobs, they look at, uh, the wages, or the salaries, they When people look for jobs, they look at the wages or the salaries, they look at the benefits, including health insurance. And these proposals this evening are all, how do we cut that by substantial amounts? Let's put it a different way. As a supervisor, are you willing to say to those people that you are attempting to recruit, or those people who are already working here, that we are going to cut your compensation further? We've had substantial cuts in compensation, and I'm not going to review that this evening. We've taught, we've had some studies on that issue. But when you're talking about how do we save some more money, are you willing to do some further cuts in overall compensation? Is that the position that you want to take? That's not the position I think I'm going to support tonight, or at budget time. But let's not just talk about this in isolation. You have got to talk about, are you willing to further cut the employees' overall compensation and benefits? That's the issue. From what I've heard, I'm not willing to do that.
Thank you. And we'll round out with Supervisor Ritzloff.
Just one, are you familiar with, do you deal with Waukesha now?
Yes.
I, could you, this is, their plan is perfect in every which way. The, the benefit schedule, their contribution, their S H, HSA. Why didn't you recommend us going this way? Like, if you did Waukesha, this is perfect, perfect in my mind, about, and, and you know Waukesha then? Why can't we look at, I mean, I assume you tell Waukesha they got a great health plan. This, in my opinion, is way better than Kenosha County's. And I, for both employees, taxpayers, benefits, incentives, going to a different RX schedule, that's, I think, better than this 150 deductible, that's just my opinion on that. But starting out with a minimum $400 person deductible, 1,200 family, 80, 20 in-network, 800 out-of-network, just a nice, simple, could, could I have you show ours people what this would cost, Waukesha's health plan? You've got it, I'll give this to you, and see how that compares to ours. I mean, I don't know, Bob, would that be something they, we can have or do? I don't know. This, in my opinion, is perfect.
Sure. But there's, there's a couple of things that I, I definitely want to make sure that this body understands. First and foremost, you can't compare yourself to another entity in complete, in complete anonymity and say, this is the plan. For, for example, Waukesha County does not have a nursing home, so they have a different, they have a different challenge. They have a different demographic. They also have their own healthcare clinic on site. So they're doing some different things that offset their costs. So their plan isn't just exactly their plan. So, their workforce is different than yours, their places they live are different than yours, the health plans that, the health providers that are available are different than yours, they don't cover retirees as long as you do, they haven't made the same promises. So, it's a great plan, and yes, we can model what that plan would cost against Kenosha Counties. But you are not going to end up in exactly the same spot in terms of the actual premium because you're not the same census.
Understood, understood. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Arrington, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I was going to, I was about to say the same thing that was just reiterated up there. Briefly, we, we're nowhere near. I mean, when I heard Waukesha, that's what made me, I wasn't even going to press my button and I, I was like, you know, we, we're not Waukesha at all. They, they completely do things, I, I know, um, some supervisors up there, people that I talk to from time to time, and, um, that, that was going to be my con- I guess in short, the one thing I will say since I have the floor, is that, ever since I've been on this board, ever since I've, I've served in Kenosha County Government, I've always put the people first, and we definitely put the taxpayers first. But we have employees that we have responsibility to, too. And, um, sometimes it doesn't always come out right when I say things. I don't like to look like the person that's taking things from them, as their county board supervisor, as what we've been elected to do. And I have to agree with Terry Rose, I don't like the direction that this whole conversation is going, and I'm not going to support that. Because I haven't seen anywhere, and you, you all are more than welcome to, to call me out, I haven't seen anywhere where we're going to not be able to make our budget. Okay? We're reaching, and I, I, it's borderline pandering, and I think it's disrespectful for us, again, to be talking about cutting things that don't need to be cut. I think our people, as a matter of fact, I know the people that we employ here in Kenosha County are quality people. They deserve what we have provided for them thus far. They do an outstanding job in the positions that we have them in, and I want us to continue to be fruitful and positive. We want them to be happy to work for us. I don't want to see people, quality people, leave Kenosha County because we want to play games and want to nitpick at the budget for things that we personally feel should go a certain way. I've been on this thing now, I believe this will be my fifth budget. And I just don't think that that's the direction we need to go. We've never really had this issue in the past. I don't believe that it's an issue now. And I, I think, I pray that my fellow supervisors will consider whether or not we even really need to have this discussion. Maybe in the future, yes. But at this time, I don't foresee anything that we need to be doing to change their insurance and what we do here in Kenosha County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Oliverman, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think some people are misunderstanding what this meeting is about. And I think it showed us that we're headed in the right direction. It was a report showing us where we've been the last five years, four years, and where we've gotten to, and we're, we're decreasing our costs, we're getting a healthier workforce, saving the taxpayers money, but we're retaining people. Retention, as I've told you, in, in the committee that I'm chair of, a couple of the workforce groups, we're having a hell of a time keeping people. We can't hire, um, janitors, we can't compete with the private sector on any of that type of jobs. We're having trouble right now with, uh, retention on the highway department because we're, again, the, the private sector is, is having a, a surge in hiring, not huge surge, but enough to, to make us want to stay competitive. So, I think this meeting was to let us know where we are, how we got there, and stave off any questions that people might have at budget time. I haven't seen any proposals from anyone saying that we're, we're cutting anything, and I'm very thankful for the presentation. And I think we're doing a, a very good job considering the economy and where we began here. We, we, as everyone else, were in a, a dark spot when Act 10 began, and, and we didn't know what we were going to be doing. So I think we're doing great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no other lights at this time. I just want to quickly reiterate, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. I also want to thank our county employees and the audience that were here tonight to listen to the presentation as well. We understand you two are taxpayers of this county, we understand that, and we want to thank you for being here. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn by Supervisor Gable, seconded by Supervisor O'Dea. All those in favor, say.
Aye.
All those opposed?